Start without her.
To start the stringing.
Okay, whenever you are thumbs up. I know that our Mr. Henry has places to go and things to do, so we're gonna get started. So we'll call the ISD 717 Monday, May 12th, 2025, regular board meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Elise.
Deb Polly.
Here.
Molly Maniac.
Here.
Lauren Pedersen. Rob Langheim.
Here.
Corinne Hennan.
Here.
Jenny Kuski.
Here.
Christina Olson.
Here.
They're just turned up real well.
Thank you.
Apparently, and you're on here. Calm down, don't yell. Okay, consideration of the agenda, we have one minor change we're going to make. Our dear Mr. Henry has a commitment in preparation for the choir concert tomorrow night, so we are going to move his board report up to immediately following the Jordan Pride Awards. But other than that, the agenda is the same as published. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published with a minor change.
Motion to approve.
Molly, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Rob, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Um, let's see, Jordan Pride Awards. Superintendent Evenson. We'll turn it over to, yes.
I never get to come up here. Chair Polly, members of the board, tonight I am very excited to be the one to present our Jordan Pride Awards. The first Jordan Pride Award goes to Rob Langheim.
What?
Yes.
I'm good.
So I would like him to come up here. Yeah, I want to say some nice things before I give it to you.
Oh, sorry.
You're okay, you're okay. So, Rob Langheim, whose endeavor for excellence has shown character, determination, and hard work that represent the values of our school and community. This is a small token of our gratitude to say congratulations and thank you for being a role model to others. And I would just like to say that, I mean, you've done this a couple of times for the Jordan Public Schools, and the thing I would say about you is you are always willing and ready to step in and support initiatives to support our kids. You go above and beyond, you know, with student activities and just making sure kids have what they need, and our staff. There have been times that I've had a simple conversation, and Rob has stepped up to make sure staff had exactly what they need, no questions asked. And I would say as well, when I first started in this position five years ago, Rob was one of the first people to schedule time to come and meet with me, and just to see if I had any questions and help me have a very smooth start. And so I've always been grateful for that, and I just, I can't express how bittersweet it is to have you go and live everybody's dream on a lake. But really, I'm so happy for your family and for you, and gonna miss seeing you on Monday nights. So, congratulations.
Thanks so much.
I'm gonna just chime in too. Rob?
Yeah.
Thank you. There are no words. You know, coming on board originally and then coming back when you were needed, and all that you've done for the Booster Club. I particularly love your passion for higher education and for making sure that our kids strive to be the best they can be. That is very evident in all the work you've done on this board and all the work you've done in the community, and it's been noticed. And it is bittersweet, but I'm so glad that your boys are still gonna be here, and I know you're still gonna be very involved, and I truly appreciate you and look forward to continuing working with you. But thank you for your work on the board, very much.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. It's been an honor.
Yeah, thank you.
Really, really appreciate it, everyone.
And we do have one more meeting after this one.
I do.
See you on Monday.
See you on Monday, yes, that's right.
Okay, so our second Jordan Pride Award is for our Henry. Henry Pop over here. Henry is our Jordan Public Schools Board of Education Student Representative for 24-25. You make me look really short. Whose endeavor for excellence has shown character, determination, and hard work that represents the values of our school and community. This is a small token of gratitude to say congratulations and thank you for being a role model to others. And Henry, I just would like to say, and I'm sure our board will have many more comments, but you have embraced this role and have demonstrated just such an amazing presence. You're very much at ease and comfortable with just having great communication with, you said, your friends, which I appreciate very much. And truly, you're inspiring in all of the things that you do. Everywhere I go, I see you. Whether it's going out for dinner, you're working, or any of our student activities, I see you. And so I truly appreciate how passionate you are to be involved with Jordan Public Schools and really, truly, the role model piece, really showing what a good friend is, and it's impressive. And I cannot thank you enough, and I hope that you're willing to do it again next year and all of the things. So, we're just really proud of you.
What do you mean, hope?
I feel like I already shook business's hand on this one.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
I echo that. Henry, your level of respect and your level of adulthood in communications is phenomenal. I have never dealt with a kid like that, as mature as you are and inspiring. And you have been just such a great asset to this board, and we look forward to another year with you. So, thank you for everything. You are greatly a true role model. So, thank you. We look forward to the concert tomorrow night, or Wednesday night, Wednesday night.
Did anyone else have anything they wanted to add before he runs off back to Pop's concert practice?
Well, I gotta give my.
He's gotta give his.
Oh, I know.
I just hope, I hope that you're learning, like, what you, like, set, like, hope it would be, like, from the board, and, you know, if you need more, just let us know. But I hope it's been like a great opportunity for you.
All right, here's your, here's your Jordan Pride.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Henry. Okay, no public comments, and now, whenever Henry is ready, we will turn it over to him for his board report.
All right, so I'm gonna make this brief but thorough. Starting off with the high school, arts and sports and end-of-year stuff is in full swing. In terms of arts, we got our yearbook coming up. I know the class is working very hard on getting that produced. I had to do a few interviews, and I know other kids who've done a couple of interviews for the page and the, for a page for their activity or whatnot, and that's gonna be super fun to see, that cultivate of, you know, what is, what our year has come to, and that's gonna be super cool. The band's concert was last Wednesday. I didn't get a chance to go, but it was very good, I heard. Pop's concert is this Wednesday, which we've all talked about a little bit, but it's gonna be super fun. You guys should all show up. Sports, spring sports are reaching kind of a, you know, the crux of their seasons. Couple highlights is that the boys' track made true team, and that's really cool. Golf is coming up with their conference meets, you know, all that kind of stuff, their end-of-year kinda playoffs, if you would, if you would entertain. The kids are very excited for school to end. That leads to a little bit of rowdiness, but also a lot of focus for finishing up classes. I know I got a lot of summative stuff coming up for, you know, my college classes and just my high school classes in general, so while we're super excited to get out, there is a degree of, you know, professionalism and focus that we bring to the table because, you know, I don't wanna flunk my classes right in the last two weeks, so. Middle school, didn't get much from the middle school. Note is that their boys and girls won their track meet last Friday. Their choir concert is also coming up this Thursday, the night after the Pop's concert. Their band concert is also on the 19th of May, so that one's gonna be good. Elementary school's had some fun activities coming up recently. They did their teddy bear clinic. The health and medicine class collaborated with kindergarten students and Summit Academy for a hands-on health education event. They had their FIAD Fun Days, apologies, where students enjoyed, you know, active, energetic days filled with, you know, physical education, games, and activities where kids can get active during the day that's not recess. The JHS band did a, did a little performance during JES lunchtime, adding, you know, music and excitement to the day, you know, it was a nice little piece to see them as they're moving into their new spaces, just get that kind of welcoming and add that, that much more energy to it. Um, they had an outdoor lunch on their new patio. They gave it a chance to enjoy lunch outside with the brand-new patio, so that was cool. And yeah, not that much more than that. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, though.
Prom went well?
What's that?
Prom went well?
Uh, yeah, I heard from the prom committee did an amazing job. I wasn't there, but it was, it seemed like everybody who I went and talked to had a fantastic time. The theme was great, the preparation was great. So, yeah, I can definitely get more info on that for you if you want, though.
Great, good. Any questions for Henry? Great job. We appreciate your report very much, so, thank you, and look forward to seeing you Wednesday, so you can skedaddle, and your mom's gonna be mighty proud. Thanks, Henry. And thanks for always being a good communicator. I appreciate that. Okay, consent agenda. We have the minutes from the April meeting. We have the April monthly finance reports, and we have a whole bunch of donations. Jordan Booster Club, seventeen thousand, five hundred and six dollars and twenty-one cents for the activities department, thank you. New Prague Sportsman Club, Scott West Fishing, five hundred dollars. Penny Fight Family Chiropractic for Celebrate Jordan, three hundred and fifty dollars. Mighty Cause, JES Backpack, forty-five dollars. Holly Cavaple, Jordan Middle School, fifty dollars. The Etl Family, JES Field Trips, one hundred dollars, an anonymous donation to the high school band of a hundred and fifty dollars. Greg Roush, Jordan High School Band, two hundred dollars. Jennifer Gorven, the rest of these are all Clay Target. Jennifer Garvin, two hundred and fifty dollars. James Crooks, three hundred dollars. Eric Hinkle, one hundred dollars. Raigoo Asphalt Repair, three hundred dollars. The Pickled Pig, five hundred dollars. Robert and Dorothy Hinkle, one hundred dollars. Thomas Grundhauser, three hundred and fifty dollars. Brent Reddence and Barb Hennan, three hundred dollars. Jerome and Christine Beach, one hundred dollars. Fish Lake Sportsman Club, three thousand dollars. John and Jeanette Radek, five hundred dollars. Michael Johnson, two hundred and fifty dollars. Dan's Auto Repair, five hundred dollars. October Electric, six hundred dollars. Herman's Landscape Supplies, five hundred dollars. Mid-County Fabricating, one hundred dollars. And Wolf Motors, one thousand dollars. So, a huge thank you to our very, very, very generous donors. And I'm telling you that Jake, Jordan, Clay Target team are really good fundraisers. We need to hire them, I think. They are good. And then we have a lot of matters of employment. Sorry that I have to read these, you guys, but I have to. We have new hires. Ellie, Ellen Helgerson, Assistant Track Coach, at twelve hundred and twelve dollars. Joel Strail, Technical Director at the high school, seventeen hundred and fifty. Krista Halverson is our new APAR Coordinator, district-wide, fifty-three thousand. And Lund Borg, Speech and Language Pathologist for Early Learning Services. She's at an MA nine, MA Step nine. Megan Schultz, Teacher, ML Elementary School. She's at an MA forty, Step seventeen. Matt Cordis, Head Basketball Coach at the high school, and he's per Schedule C, sixty-four hundred and thirteen dollars. We have resignations. We have Marlene Conyers, Elementary, Paris Sped Teacher. Krista Halverson, because she's moving over to the APAR position, is resigning as Activities Administrative Assistant. Brett Flechek is resigning as a Special Ed Teacher at the elementary. And Brenda Buckman, we want to thank her. She, this is her retirement. She has been a longtime administrative assistant in the elementary and middle school, and we thank her for all her years of service and greatly appreciate that. Then we have non-renewals. We have Jill Casper. All of these are Special Ed Para Professionals. Jill Casper at the elementary, Julianne Struck at the elementary, Angela Coleman at the elementary, Julie Davenport at the elementary, Jacqueline Kieros, Early Learning Services, Sped Prayer Professional, Lori Shanis, Middle School Sped Para Professional. And then we have contract renewals for all our winter sports. We have Assistant Wrestling Coach Tyler Biscans, Assistant Wrestling Coach Justin Reimsma, Assistant Girls Wrestling Coach Melissa Jacobs, Middle School Coach Jacob Hill, Girls Basketball Head Coach Kyle Johnson, Girls Varsity Assistant Basketball Coach Ella Mato, Boys JV Girl, B, no, B and JV Girls Basketball Coach Wade Whitkop, C Girls Basketball Coach Tim Benzick. We're getting there. Kevin Shepherds, Shepherds, our Middle School Girls Basketball Coach, Lisa Jamison, our Nordic Ski Head Coach, Brian Jamison, our Nordic Ski Assistant Coach, Amy Peters, Speech Head Coach, Michelle Spees, First Assistant Speech Coach, Mariah Olinger, Second Assistant Speech Coach, Chani Reeling, Winter Cheerleading Head Coach, Marie Wignall, Competitive One Act Play Coach, Jan Lennox, Competitive One Act Play Assistant Coach, Joe Hubel, Robotics Head Coach, Steve McLellan, Robotics Head Coach, and Ozzy Sand, the Winter Weight Room Supervisor. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve.
Molly, is there a second?
I'll second, but do you have to read the other tech people that you missed?
The what?
The tech. No? Oh, okay. All right. Got it.
Okay.
Well, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, review and act on the annual approval of the graduates list. Superintendent Evenson.
I always get excited about this action item every year. It is such a neat time for our seniors. Believe it or not, we are within days of commencement, so just a couple of notes I'd like to make before we get to the action piece of it. So, May 23rd, 2025 is our commencement ceremony. The question is, you know, will we be outside? Will we not be outside? What will that look like? So just a reminder of process, there are a few of us that meet a little before eleven on that day and kind of look at all of the weather, and sometimes it's really obvious it's just gonna be sunny the whole time, and sometimes it's not so much. But we have a Plan B just in case, but that announcement will come shortly after eleven o'clock on the day of commencement. Pretty excited about that for our students. This year, we will be graduating one hundred seventeen graduates, pending everyone completes all of the requirements ahead of that. And so at this time, I would ask that you approve the list of graduates pending completion of all requirements.
Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Corinne, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Rob? Discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving our list of graduates pending completion of all requirements signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Proposed capital and LTFM budget updates. Amy Haberman.
Good evening. So, every year about this time, I come forward and I give you a projected listing of some of the LTFM projects that we're gonna do in the 25-26 school year. Also, how we're gonna spend some of our capital dollars for the 25-26 school year, and also for the Safe School Dollars that we received. So, in the spring, the Facilities Director and I will meet and we'll go over some of the LTFM projects that are on our ten-year plan and that have also been wish lists by the principals and other directors. So, the Facilities Director has already talked to him, has already talked to the principals and the directors, and we've come up with some proposals. So what we, what I want you guys to keep in mind is that we had been intentionally reserving a lot of our LTFM dollars to do the high school roof. Well, that project is now complete. So for the 25-26 school year, I'm projecting to get about nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So that's about seven hundred and ninety-three thousand is gonna be new money. And then, if everything goes as planned, we'll carry over from fiscal year 25 about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So some of the projects that we have considered and are considering is the high school auditorium lighting, and that is about an estimated four hundred thousand. The tech director is still working on getting specifics on how that looks and what we have to do to get the job done, and it might not be this year, but we're hoping it's gonna be. We're gonna continue to do some repairs on the high school bleacher gymnasiums. There's some potential roofing repairs that need to be done at the middle school. And as you can see, there's, there's some other projects that we're gonna do, hopefully some painting in the gym at the circ and some other painting as well that's needed. We're gonna continue to do the, we're gonna put money towards the ES elementary school roof replacement, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars for that project. We're looking at resurfacing and repainting the middle school tennis court, and that's an estimated two hundred thousand dollars. And as you can see, there's just some other things and other items that are, that's gonna be necessary, like we're probably gonna do annual painting updates and some mechanical repairs, and then just some other repairs and maintenance that might come up during the year. So now we're gonna go on to capital dollars. So our estimated capital dollars are about five hundred and one thousand dollars. So we have to pay the property tax on the farm property out of that. I've met with the Technology Director on technology needs, and it is time for us to redo our firewall upgrades, and that's a big chunk of our capital dollars. We have some athletic capital needs, and then also some curriculum needs come out of there of about eighty thousand dollars. Our Safe School Dollars, we get about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and that restricted fund is allowed to go in the negative. Out of those funds, we pay our school resource officer, and that's about seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. And we also pay the cyber protection of Arctic Wolf. So our next steps is the Facilities Director, and I will work together to finalize some of these projects and go out for bids and get the amount of quotes that are needed. And in July, there will be our action item. We have to do the ten-year plan for MDE, and that will be brought forward at that time. Any questions?
Before, could I add just a couple of comments? Some of you that have been on the board a long time will remember this. The lighting project at the auditorium has been pushed back. Well, I've been here five years, and it was pushed back before I came here. So, now that we have the roof in place, that's something that we really need to address. The other piece of it is the middle school tennis courts, some of the gaps, it's somewhat unplayable in certain places. So we've patched and patched, and now that the roof is in place, we will have the dollars to make that safe and usable for our kids.
Yes, and we are in the process of getting the quotes for the tennis court, so we're hoping that that will get done at the end of summer or in the summer and hopefully be ready to play for in the fall.
So I'll open it up to questions before we have a motion. This is not, is this?
This is, this one is just informational. Yep, in July, we'll have the.
So, these are all anticipated to be done in the next year?
Yes, yep, and throughout the year. And some of these, we just put money as placeholders, like for middle school roofs, and the painting that we want to do, and also I did put some in groundskeeping, like for sidewalk repairs and just things like that, so that money's put aside in case those needs arise.
And then a clarification in July, when she comes back, it's an MDE requirement to approve the ten-year plan, so you're not necessarily approving these projects, but it's a procedural thing that we have to do.
Sure.
Can I ask one question? Can you scroll up?
Lauren, go ahead.
Scroll up a minute.
I thought I saw something about the elementary school roof.
Yes.
We're adding that, those dollars to finish that roof.
Because not all of the roof was done with project dollars.
Okay.
And it's not all gonna be able to be covered, so we're gonna take that amount and put it towards the roof.
Okay.
That way, we'll have one whole new roof at the end of summer.
Okay.
And we really think that tennis court's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars?
The last, sorry, the last, when we did the varsity tennis court, it was about two hundred thousand dollars. So what they have to do is they have to, an excavator has to come in and they have to redig it out, take the fencing off, or take the fencing out, and then bring in all new asphalt, and then we have to pay a company to come in and paint it.
Okay, so they're like digging it out and?
Yes, they are, they are totally digging it out.
Like, it says resurface, so.
No, it's a total, yeah, they have to dig the entire thing out.
Unfortunately, the life on, in Minnesota on tennis courts with all the heat and then the cold and the cracks, it has, you know, a lifespan, and since I've been here, we've been patching the best that we can, but it probably should have been replaced my first year here.
So, we have stadium continued repairs. I'm guessing that in the ten-year plan, that the stadium probably is gonna need some major.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which will be huge. And then the annual turf testing. Can you explain that, please?
Yep, so Dan has a company come out, and they actually test the turf to make sure that it's still playable and what the the capacity it can hold, and I think also, like, like how much longer we can play on it till it needs to be resurfaced.
And they're, they get data from that, and so they're able to actually fill some of those little rubber pellets and things just to maintain it and keep it in good shape.
Other questions or comments? Good stuff, it's stuff that needs to be done.
It is, and, and everything is expensive, so we try to pick and choose the best we can.
Well, I commend you because, you know, it's important that we, you know, keep our facilities and our grounds and everything in tip-top shape, and I know it's a lot of money, but again, we all take care of our homes and put money into them, and we need to do that here to, you know, upgrade and keep things safe.
I think it's important to note, this money can only be used for this.
Right.
You know, it can't be used for staffing positions. It can't be used, you know, really for anything. I mean, it's, it is very specific in how you can spend those dollars.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay. Review and act on the annual nutrition services meal prices, and this is an action item.
All right, good evening. I have a couple of things for you tonight. The first one is our annual approval of meal prices. As you'll see when you look here, that we did not change our prices as a district for milk or extra entree. However, we do have to increase our adult breakfast and adult lunch price per MDE requirements. So we'll be going from two forty for breakfast up to three ten, and from five dollars to five fifty. Anybody have any questions over that?
And that's required by MDE.
Yes, ma'am, every year.
Do they set the price of what it has to be?
Yes, yep, they set a minimum price. Some districts can choose to go higher if they want. We stick to the minimum.
Do we have a lot of staff that eat?
We do, and then we also use that minimum price for KidsCo in the summer, so we can offer them meals. So it's basically, it's, we call it an adult price, but it's just our non-reimbursable price, meal price.
Do you know how they like come up with that number?
It's a great question. From last year, I know, like, fifty and sixty cents, but.
I really, we don't usually know how MDE comes up with their numbers. I mean that in a really caring and truthful way.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, like. And like, is it this, the same across the whole state, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, we just get an email.
Yeah, and usually it comes out in the summer. It was just a little bit early this year.
Yeah.
All right, can I move on to the next item?
They need to act on it.
Okay.
So this is the piece where?
Yes, ma'am.
That you need action on.
Yep.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the updated meal prices.
Motion to approve.
Molly, is there a second?
No, second.
Jenny, discussion, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
All right, so my next topic this evening, this is actually gonna be an action item as well. I apologize, it says informational at the top. But we had to go out to bid this year for our primary food vendor. So our contract with our current food vendor was up June 30th of this year. So we went, and when I say we, I apologize, I should clarify, we are in a joint contract with New Prague area schools. So the director of New Prague and myself, we composed an. So the director of New Prague and myself, we composed an RFP, a request for proposal, that was sent out and publicly posted back in March. We did receive three bids this year, which is awesome. We, um, in the past have not received bids from other companies, just due to different factors. But we received three bids this year, um, one from our current vendor, one from Cisco, and then Performance Food Services. We used a scoring rubric, which was provided by MDE, that basically just makes it all very clear for us, which is very helpful. Indian Head was the clear winner in all of this. Cisco is a great company, they were, they were close behind. But what it basically boils down to is Indian Head has so many tools in place for schools. So they were, they were awarded the bid. So we will be working with them, we have a one-year contract, um, with four more one-year terms if we choose to do so.
Okay, great, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Molly, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chrissy, okay, any further questions or comments?
Who are we currently with?
Indian Head, so we're staying with our same prime vendor.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Why do we work with New Prague? Like, is there a benefit to it?
Yeah, that's a great question. So basically, we just have more buying power when we work together. So we buy more products, we hopefully get a better rate, rather than, since we're both smaller districts. Yeah. Plus, it's really helpful when you're going through this process for the first time to have someone else to work with. Any other questions? Awesome.
Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, uh, the, um, primary food vendor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight point five. This is a sad one. So, um-
Makes a lot, Rob.
Yeah, so I received the, Renee and I, Superintendent Evenson and myself received the following, um, email from Mr. Langheim, Rob, earlier-
What did I say?
He said, "I will be resigning from the Jordan School Board on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, due to my upcoming move from the Jordan to Spring Lake later this summer. Please note that both Finanari will remain in the district, and I will continue my service to the Jordan Booster Club. It's been an absolute pleasure working with both of you over the last several years, and I look forward to supporting the district in other capacities moving forward." And we are holding you to that. Best regards, Rob." So, um, that leaves, um, the dilemma for us as board members to look at filling the upcoming vacant seat. So basically, we have three options. Those three options are, we can go out for, um, a gen- for an election, um, which would cost the district a lot of money. Um, we could, um, open it up for, um, candidates to come forward, and we could interview them. Or we could go, move forward with, um, our recent election and go with our next, um, closest vote getter, um, which was, happens to be Matt Bertrand. Um, so those are basically our three options. Um, and then what happens is, um, depending on wh- which way we go, after a person is appointed to the position, they sit, they can sit at the table for, uh, thirty days, and they can participate in the conversation, but they can't vote until they're legally seated, um, which gives the community thirty days to contest, um, whoever the person is. So having said that, I will open it up to, um, discussion and to the wishes of the board.
Is that from, is Matt from like the just previous election, or from like the, okay?
And as a district, um, I believe in the past, we've engaged, um, I mean, that has been past practice, um, which honors the will of the voters. But, I mean, you know, as Deb said, you guys decide how this-
I would recommend that we don't go with the will of the voters, just because it's cost-effective, it doesn't cost us money. Everybody ran a great camp- campaign in the last election, it was just last year in November. And they've already, the public has already spoken as to who they would prefer for our next candidate. So my recommendation would be that we just go with the, uh, next highest vote getter within that previous election.
Well, you know that they're in, he's interested in it, because, like, you have to apply and, yeah. Right here.
He's been coming, he's been coming to meetings too. So-
Molly's always blocking.
He's been staying, he's been staying engaged, he's been coming to meetings, he's up to speed on what's going on in the district. It, it just kinda makes complete sense to me.
Plus, it would streamline and speed up the process. Um, you, we wouldn't have to go through the postings and setting up interviews and, you know, going through that whole process and, and stuff too. So I think, obviously, in my opinion, um, going out for election is just not, a, a non-option. Not something we would wanna spend the money on. Um, and I, I think it's a testament to, again, the will of the people. Um, and then also that, um, Mr. Bertrand has been so diligent in being at our meetings. He's obviously interested and engaged, um, and is knowledgeable about, um, where we're going. We obviously have some big decisions coming up with looking at budgets and everything going on with the state of the economy and everything. So, and, you know, the building projects, so, um, I will entertain a motion from somebody to do something.
Motion to approve using the voter, right? The voter-
Next closest voter.
Yeah, representative.
Thank you, Jenny, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Chrissy?
I'm sorry, I cannot like put that in words today.
The will of the people.
The will of the people.
The people.
The next candidate.
It was a long day at work.
It was.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, to appoint Matt Bertrand, um, as our, um, to fill the vacancies, upcoming vacant seat of Rob Langheim. Um, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Congrats.
Welcome.
So, uh, Matt, the next steps will be that Renee and I will meet with you, and we'll do some onboarding about board protocol and all the things you have to do to get access to this and to, um, get hooked up with MSBA, the National School Boards Association. And there, there will be training, phase trainings that you'll have to do. So we'll get all those dates and work on that. And then effective, um, the first meeting in June, you'll be seated at the table. But, um, is it thirty days from tonight?
I'd have to check with MSBA.
We have to find out when the time clock starts on the thirty days, so.
Yeah, I have to, I forgot to ask that. I think it's from tonight, but I would wanna be diligent and check.
Yeah. Yes, okay. How do you turn this back on? Oh, there. Okay, um, thank you all. So, um, yay. Okay, on to superintendent's report.
Okay, um, Chair Poli, members of the board, happy May, we are here. Um, I hope you've appreciated my weekly updates with the countdown of four weeks, three weeks, two weeks. I hope that hasn't stressed anybody out, um, for commencement coming up. But we are in the home stretch. Um, there's a lot going on, as, um, our student representative, Henry, shared with us. Um, reminder, if you need Pops tickets, um, the link was sent, just reach out if you had any trouble with that. Uh, but that is, that is this week, that's Wednesday. So, and Henry had shared, it's going to be amazing, he's very excited about it. So, um, we also have some other activities. Just a reminder for graduation, we'll meet at seven PM outside the high school office, like we always do. Um, start watching the weather now, um, you know, just to see what we're gonna wear, those things. Um, it might be a little cooler that evening as of today. Sunset Drive project updates, um, this week, um, I have a kickoff meeting for Sunset Drive projects with the city. Um, and that's a project that will take place in conjunction with our summer construction. Um, starting Monday, June second, we anticipate that, uh, the stretch of road from, um, the high school staff lot over here, um, you know, down to Aberdeen, well, probably closer to Timberline, 'cause they'll need to be able to get in and out at times. Not Timberline, Timber Ridge. Um, that will be closed, and they'll start the work on the roundabouts, we anticipate. They've said Labor Day, they are shooting for, uh, the week of our open house, um, in August. So we will see how that goes, it's gonna depend on the weather. Um, let's see, building projects update, um, yeah, it's actually gone really smoothly. We continue on phase one point five. Um, you know, as I shared, I think, last week, um, they're starting in the finishes. And so we're looking at, at paint and different things. And so, um, really excited, um, to be where we're at with that and to have that chunk of the project done ahead of summer, because it really helps with what they call the summer slam, which is a very short window to get the rest of the things done. So, um, our staff, we're going to do an all-hands-on-deck, um, moving, packing day party like we did last year, um, on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, to move all of our summer programs to the middle school and, uh, to be out of the elementary school by five o'clock on the thirtieth. So, um, it's a heavy lift, but, um, we've done it before, and we have the best team. So I'm really confident that that will go smoothly. Um, phase two, um, you know, we're gonna finish the building, essentially. We'll finish the rest of the roof, we'll finish, uh, the K, um, and one area, ELS area, um, all of that will get done. And, um, the final lift on, um, parent pickup and drop-off and front parking lot, all of that stuff, um, will be done this summer. So really excited about it. Um, I wanna do a tour in June, um, so I'm looking at the work session in June for us, um, to meet, uh, probably outside of JES, depending on what it looks like to get there. We might end up having to meet here and navigate, 'cause I just don't know. Um, but I'd love to do a tour at that time and, um, get us through there, so you can see where we're at. Um, today, uh, had some fun with Elise, uh, taping, uh, the newest video for the community. I was interviewed by some of her students on the project, and they're amazing kids. So that was super fun, um, so that'll be coming out very soon. Um, but yeah, uh, lots of important dates listed on here. I feel like it's gonna be about two weeks, and I'm gonna say it's almost time for the school year, Corinne, so.
Summer's almost over.
Summer is almost over, I know. Yeah, with that, that's my report. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Any questions for Renee, Superintendent Evenson?
Okay, all the other, uh, directors' reports were listed, any comments or questions about any of them? Okay, then we are on to, um, the board reports, committee reports. Budget finance, um, is an ongoing, ongoing thing. Calendar did not meet, city school, we had a meeting, oh, gosh, it seems like an eternity ago.
Yeah.
It was Monday, April twenty-first. Um, were you there, Lauren?
I was there.
Yeah.
And it was me, you, Tom. Jeremy wasn't there, there was a-
I'm sorry, you reported on this.
Yeah, I feel like we did.
No, it was April twenty, April twenty-first.
You know what, I put it in my weekly update, that's why you know about it.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so basically, lots of information about the construction timelines, um, going on around town. Um, the city bought the Excel building. Um, they're doing a bid to design the front of the Excel building, and then they're hoping to turn around and sell it. Got it and put it up for sale. Um, they thought it would be a great bar restaurant, we'll see where that goes.
What's the Excel building?
Is that one behind the creamery?
Yes. No.
I think behind it, there will be expanded parking, but they're not getting rid of the building.
Got it.
Where is it?
Behind the creamery. It's the building, there's, you have the creamery, the alley, and the Excel building.
Right, right, practically on the railroad track.
Okay.
Um, I'll leave this if I see it, De- Dealey is supposed to be opening the end of June. Yeah, next to, uh, the Pickled Pig.
Yeah.
Yes. Right. Um, a distillery is going in across from City Hall, that's supposed to be opening in June. Um, the Plaza, pardon?
They tore the house down.
Yes. The hamburger home. The house.
The house on the hill.
I lost, I lost track of-
Yes.
Well, within the year.
Are we within the year?
The house is gone, yay.
We need to do more betting.
Um, Beaumont Bluffs out here submitted for development five, sixty-five lots, and that was, the city approved that. Um, Ames has to pull another permit by the end of the year or ask for an extension. Um, what's a pump track? Got approval for one fifty K, I'm not sure what that means, but whatever. Anyway, it was a good meeting, very, it's always very informative, that's, that is a great committee.
Yeah, I love that one.
Um-
Oh, it's a skateboard park.
Oh, okay.
I knew about that.
Okay.
It's a skateboard bike park, that's what it means.
Right, and that's gonna be, not Poli Park, that's gonna be-
It's gonna be up in the Angel Park.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, community ed rec, Corinne?
We meet on Monday. But, I mean, just probably a look at a few things we'll talk about, will probably be, um, I mean, Celebrate Jordan, that was a big success, um, turned out to be a really nice day, so that was nice. Um, probably be looking at planning for Run of the Mill, um, at High Med Fest. Probably will need volunteers. Uh, and then probably programming and, and things of that nature, so, but yeah, that's next Monday, we'll talk about some more things, I'm sure.
I just wanna add to that, um, I got an email from Colin today, um, Maggie Shippers in the high school that does the medical careers class, is, um, she does, they do a partnership with medical careers class with the kids at Oak Terrace. She's looking to expand that, um, and do more, like with the shul house in Oak Terrace and Brentwood Court. She wrote a huge grant, so, um, hoping she gets it, and if not, she still wants to move forward with, um, where the kids would partner with, uh, seniors from the community and meet with them like once a week and do things also.
That'd be great, yeah, some-
Can adults do it?
Yeah. Um, district advisory, I-
Done for the year.
Yep, done for the year.
That's done, the facilities, obviously, is ongoing, I mean, conferred, did not meet negotiations, waiting until, waiting until we find out what the legislature does. Policy, let's see.
We haven't met.
Okay. APAC, um, the banquet went really well, and we had it at the elementary school, it was a great event, a nice turnout. Um, very nice, uh, it was kind of a moving tribute to, um, a, the young gentleman that passed away last year. So that was, that was special, um, very nice event. Booster Club, Lauren, Chrissy, Rob.
Aren't we meeting on the twenty-first? Next Wednesday?
Yeah, we meet every third Wednesday.
Anything to report coming up, you, you any updates?
Yeah, well, the, the big update was, so, following the last time we got together as a board, uh, and essentially approved the, uh, the openness of moving forward with sport boards, uh, Booster Club has kinda mobilized and has a pretty solid game plan in place to be able to start kind of moving forward, kind of in that direction. So, um, a lot of just kind of identifying kind of what the path is gonna be to, to be successful kind of in that regard. So a lot of kind of on-hand, or kind of all hands on deck, um, kinda going on. I think we'll have more line of sight in terms of if we're gonna be able to do it for this fall versus waiting for the following. Um, but that was, that was a, a great kind of milestone meeting, just being able to get, um, some of that guidance from all of you, so thank you. And, um, a lot of just diligent effort to, to be able to, to hopefully start kind of moving in that direction. So we'll continue to keep it posted on that, but that would be, that would be huge if we're able to pull that off.
Yeah, that would be, be great. Any questions? Okay, Ed Foundation?
Angel.
Okay, legislative, well, that's a story in itself. And hopefully, you're all following, there's, um, quite a push, actually, by, um, many superintendents in the state of Minnesota that, um, submitted letters to the legislature. Um, in particular, I believe Superintendent Evenson can speak more fluently about this, about the UI thing and in general.
Yep, yeah, I was a part of that, um, I think we're well over seventy now, um, signatures on it. And, um, it was sent last week, um, to the governor, um, you know, the Speaker of the Hou- like, all the people that need to have it, and really urged them to take a look at all of the implementations they're asking districts to roll out, and did not want to get into a debate on what we think we should be doing or not doing, but more urge a more systemic and thoughtful approach, um, for school districts, um, you know, and have them pay closer attention to some of the things that we're seeing about, um, you know, the unemployment benefits and what that means for school districts and, and funding, looking at universal meal- And what that means for school districts and, and funding, looking at universal meals. And if they were to be more thoughtful in that approach with, even, even if everyone got a free breakfast. And families that make under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with four kids still get free meals. But people over a hundred and sixty thousand pay for their meals, that would free up enough money to take care of probably. The unemployment insurance, it would help out with some of the paid family medical. One of the things that we're concerned about is our staff and the employees across the state who, it's not unique to schools. Who are already facing climbing insurance rate costs that come directly out of pocket from those impacted. And you know, now everyone will be taxed as well. And so it's another hit in the pocketbooks, not just for our staff, but for families. So a more measured thoughtful approach as well as the, the broken pension system and TRA. And being thoughtful about what that looks like, because if having no solution is more costly than coming up with a solution for that. We will get to a point where it will cost districts far more money to not do anything about it. So that was sent on, I want to say on Thursday. And it's, it's gotten some press, I heard about it on TV the other day. But there were more than just the seventy of us or more that sent it, there were other superintendents that sent their own letters too. Because at a certain point, they're not listening. You know, we've testified, we've shared the data and they, they need to hear it because our kids depend on it. And if they don't do something, the people that they're trying to help, we're going to be cutting those positions because we cannot afford to have them. So it's frustrating, but I hope that, I hope that we're heard and we'll keep advocating.
I believe end of session is.
May nineteenth.
Yeah, the end of this week, so if you get legislative updates from MSBA, they're, they're shooting them out. And you can just click on it and send responses to our legislators and begging them to please do that.
And I printed this out just to show you, if you wanted to go on the MSBA site and see what some of the omnibus bills comparisons are for the House, the Senate and the Governor's bill. And what MSBA stance is on that, that's online and it's, it's pretty helpful just to streamline some of the high flyer things related to education. So you can kind of see where that advocacy is, is headed, so.
How many districts are in the state of Minnesota?
Three hundred and thirty-one.
Yeah.
Three thirty-one, okay, thank you.
Okay. MSHSL, nothing really new there that I can think of.
I could add, just this week I got the why we play and the required approvals, so that'll be on the June board meeting.
We will be hosting, Jordan will be hosting the state golf, double A golf tournament out at Ridges. And also we'll be hosting, at the mini mat, we'll be hosting the baseball tournament. And I know they'll be looking, John, Uton will be looking for ticket takers, it's really fun, it's fun to do, it's a fun day. So if you can help out, sign up and do that. Scale, Lauren?
Scale did meet on Friday, I did not go because I had a conflicting appointment.
I was online.
Travis, Travis did some type of presentation, but I didn't know what his discussion was. And then there was talk about the environmental stewardship topics that have been going on for the last three meetings. But I don't know the specifics of it.
It, it was really good, Demcon put it, or put on a, a part of that presentation. And it's, it's been just helpful information, I think, just so people knew kind of what some of the ongoing projects were within Scott County. And, and then Travis shared really kind of a, a Jordan update, anything you want to know about Jordan. He also shared that Delia's is going to be. Well, that was fun, and I hope so. But yeah, so it, it was a good, it was just a really good view of Jordan and what's going on here.
CAC, Molly? Southwest Metro, lots of changes there, the, the HR director got another job in a different intermediate district. And Melanie Cray, who many of you have met, I know she, Renee mentored her when she was doing her superintendent stuff. She took a different job in a different district. So there's been lots of changes at Southwest Metro, there's going to be a lot of shuffling around and moving programs. Our program down here from the Merv Sec building is moving partially to the Dean Lakes building. And partially to the East Union site and something else is going in there. They're just doing a lot of refining, shuffling around, we're still working on the strap plan, we'll be working on that next Tuesday, I guess. Or the twentieth, whatever date that is, so lots of stuff going on there, it's all good though. And with that, we'll move on to reports, I'll start with you Chrissy.
I don't really have much to report, actually.
That's okay, Jenny?
We are in full swing of flag football on Sundays and looking forward to the elementary family fun day on Saturday that's coming up. I don't know, otherwise that's about it, just trying to finish the school year strong.
Corinne?
We surprisingly don't have a ton going on in May, which is really nice. But I'm just planning out the summer, which is going to be a disaster, so it will be over very soon. And school will be starting, no. Yeah, I mean, I have like a spreadsheet of who needs to go where, what day, what time, so it'll be interesting how the summer goes, but it'll be fun. Looking forward to graduation, hopefully it's warm, last year was freezing.
That's why I said start watching the weather.
Plummeting down to the sixties.
Yeah, concerts this week for the kids, so it'll be fun.
Great, thank you, Rob?
Yeah, things are crazy busy with us, so just kind of hats off to all the teachers as kind of classes are getting wrapped up. I know a lot of kids now are starting to finish up and get ready kind of for that final test or project or paper. That needs to get turned in here over the next week or two. Lots of extracurricular activities that are going on, getting my fill of baseball games. And track events, props to the, the track team for making true team, which is just great because it's kind of full, kind of team effort. Pops concert this Wednesday is going to be awesome, so very much looking forward to that and just getting ready for graduation. So yeah, lots of stuff going on in J-Town.
Lauren?
Rob covered everything I was going to cover, so you know, there's. I know, tough act to follow, just looking forward to the end of the year's activities. I was, Lana joined choir for the Pops concert only, so that was fun.
So he actually did join choir.
But it not for a class, he like, it's like he's not getting a grade, he just asked the teacher if he could join for the Pop concert. So he's, so I'm excited to go watch that, that concert. And then there's just a lot of the end of the school year activities that are coming up. I'm looking forward to watching the seniors go through the elementary school and do their tour that they do, their walkthrough for all the schools. I'm looking forward to graduation season and all the parties that are coming up with all the, all the kids that are graduating this year. So we have a lot of activities going on and a big kudos to the, to the teachers for finishing the year strong. And getting everything ready, especially at the elementary schools so that they can finish that project. So you know, there's just a lot that always goes on at the end of the year, so. Thank you to the teachers and to the staff and to the district for everything that you do.
We're pretty lucky, we have good people.
So I went to two plays this year.
I went to.
Yeah, so we went to the middle school play, which was awesome, they did Romeo, Shakespeare in the Park, which is really hard for middle schoolers.
Yeah, it was phenomenal.
They did a really, really good job and then I went to three showings of Annie. And it was awesome, they did a really good job, doing Annie with thirteen kids was quite impressive. So we had a friend come watch and they did it at Prior Lake and they had over five hundred kids in the cast of Annie.
Oh my goodness.
And so for us to do it with thirteen kids was crazy, so they did a great job, so it was cool, it was fun to like see.
It was so good.
Little Peyton up there too, so she did, she did a good job.
Her vocals.
So, yeah, yeah, I haven't heard Annie in my house now for a week and it's quite strange. But yeah, so the plays are really good, I was just in the full swing of softball, so.
Yeah. But yeah. The set for the middle school play was gorgeous.
Yeah, they did a really awesome job, yeah.
They did, yeah, the play, yeah, both, both plays were just incredible, so when you're done, we'll just knock it out of the park. Okay, I have quite a few things, May twentieth is awards night at the high school at eight o'clock. Next Monday, so we have a meeting tonight, we have a meeting next Monday. That will be the meeting, starts at five o'clock and basically it's a workshop and basically all we're going to do, we're not going to have business stuff. We're going to be honoring our retirees, which currently we have.
It's just going to be five.
Five.
Yes, the sixth one does not want.
Okay, okay, so we're going to have five retirees, so, ooh, I have to get those frames pretty fast. So we'll have, we'll honor the five retirees next Monday, starting at five o'clock, we'll have treats. And then at five thirty, we'll do the speaking about them and presenting their plaques and stuff. So I'll be giving the plaques, the frames and the cards and we'll, as usual, the board will divvy up the costs on that. Let's see, so that's next week, I want to thank Dollars for Scholars for all of the upcoming scholarships that our kids will be receiving. I know it's a lot of work and greatly appreciated. And then May thirtieth, don't forget it's the staff breakfast, we'll meet probably, is it going to be at the high school? Okay, at the high school, let's meet at like seven fifteen-ish, seven twenty and greet the staff as they come back. I think that's all I have. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Actually, I do have one thing I wanted to add that I forgot. Does everybody know who Shay Backer is? Is that Shay Backer? I just want, like, I don't know if anybody realizes this, but he was taking pictures for prom. His pictures are amazing, like he is very talented and I was talking to him down at the park, he's like all self-taught. Like he is all self-taught, he's doing YouTube videos and everything, but when I was looking at his pictures from his camera and comparing them to mine. Yeah, he just, he knocked it out of the park compared to me, so. And he did a QR code, so if anybody wants to look at the pictures, you just got to find the QR code and you can go in and look at all the pictures from prom.
Where's the QR code?
He has it on Facebook, it's posted on Facebook. I can, I don't know if it's, I know his mom shared it, but yeah, I think it is under his name.
Okay.
He's a student.
He's a student, he's a sophomore.
He's a sophomore?
Yeah, they, they live out in Bridle Creek, Kathleen Backer is, his mom, his sister is the one that. She's going.
What's he, what's he doing in graduation night? Just saying.
I know, oh, that's a really good idea, I don't know, but he, like, guys, I'm not kidding, his pictures were so good.
Yeah, I mean, if that's kind of a talent of his and if he's willing to maybe take some, you know, kind of pictures throughout the night. And then do that QR code for all the families, that'd be an awesome idea.
So I just wanted to give a shout out to him because he was amazing.